Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Be calling meeting order. Ready, Andy? I'd like to call the meeting in order for the Bellis Falls Union High School. And let's do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any adjustments to the agenda, Andy?
Yeah, I have, um, I have one, we have a resignation. I know we don't have it as a, even a bullet point here, but I think it'd be important to bring that resignation to the board. And then, um, we, we had missed, and our whole finished business, um, there'd been some discussion about, um, a settlement, from a prior employee, I don't know if you want to do that under executive or, um, in public, but those were the two I had.
So I think that we should probably put the, um, the employee under executive session, and do we need to put the resignation on our executive session?
I mean, I can, I can, I have the letter from the employee, I can read, um,
So you will put resignation, resignation under 8A?
8A, okay. An executive session, do you want, um, do you want to move that to nine, and then director's comment to 10, and adjournment to 11?
Yes.
Executive session after director's comment?
Oh, sorry, yeah, let's do it the other way around, so how about executive session is 10 and adjournment is 11?
Do you want to add July 25 minutes because we postponed them to this thing? Not listed on there, but we postponed them last time to this meeting.
We didn't get them in our packet. We got the draft for the 22nd.
So let's try to get those in next month's packet, because if they're not in the packet, probably a lot of people didn't look at them.
What are those?
So we have adjusted.
July 25.
Go ahead. The adjustments I have is we've gone to, um, we're going to go to an 8A resignation, and a 10 for executive session to discuss a former employee.
Uh, Jason has a, uh, his hand up.
Go ahead, Jason.
Molly, can we also, I had wanted to bring up the former employee in executive session, but can I also add an executive session to discuss administration evaluations?
Uh, do I need to have that in executive, or can it go into 8B? Andy, what are your thoughts?
Um, I don't know what, I mean, what, what Jason's asking about, because it would, executive session would be what's going to be harmful to the board.
Or the employee.
Or the employee, so, um.
I think if we want to start a communication about administration, um, reviews, then we can do that in 8B. Is there anything, Jason, for a reason why we should go into executive that's going to harm the administration or the board?
No.
Okay. So let's change that to 8B then. Any communication or public comments?
Molly, I'm sorry, just real quick, Margot showed up, just so that you have that.
I see her, thank you, I see her. Is there any communication or public comments?
Uh, yes, I, I don't know how to raise my hand.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, thank you, Molly, I'm calling as a taxpayer of the town of Rockingham. Uh, as, as I think most of you know, I do serve on some school boards, and have been active in the Building and Grounds Committee. I just want to encourage the high school board to consider very strongly the use of the ESSER funds to renovate the high school. I think this is a once in a, really a lifetime opportunity to address a, a building that, uh, well, it looks like a garage that hasn't been picked up in quite a while. Uh, the interior needs to be renovated, uh, and, uh, I can assure you, at least in my opinion, that, uh, that far outweighs, uh, uh, any kind of a daycare center or a need for a, a new building for a superintendent. So, uh, just a heads up, uh, what's been discussed at other boards, and, uh, thank you very much, Molly, for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else?
I don't see anyone's hand up, so.
Okay, we're going to move on to review and approve board minutes of August 22nd. Does anyone have any adjustments to that agenda, uh, to those minutes? June, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, Jenny McKay was in attendance, I'd like to have her added.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have one.
Jason?
Uh, Molly, we've talked, um, I don't remember exactly what's, uh, number it was, and I think it's under bullet point nine, when I was talking about the subs, but I clearly remember having a discussion about, um, all administration when they're working from eight to three in a position where they're teaching, um, kind of, uh, in a working position out on the floor, you know, visible to the staff, visible to the students, um, that type of stuff, um, and I just, I don't see that in here anywhere, I just don't see it.
So again, minutes are not verbatim of what happened, um, but they're to capture the essence of it, but I can ask Tara to go back and take a look at that, but they should just be kind of catching the essence of the conversation, not the verbatims, so.
Anything else? Okay, I'm hearing none, so I'd like.
Molly, sorry, I haven't had. Sorry, I couldn't see my hand. I wouldn't have except to respond to what Andy has said. Statute gives you the minimum requirements, minimum. These are going to be historical, essentially historic documents, they don't speak to the matters that we're talking about and concerns, especially if everything doesn't move smoothly. Um, having the minimum required done is not necessarily the most prudent thing to do for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I need a motion to approve the board minutes of August 22nd with the corrections made that Jenny McKay was in attendance, and we will look at Jason Terry's comments and see if we can't add some of those in, and, and under nine. Can I have a motion?
Make the motion, Molly, to approve the minutes with corrections.
Is there any other discussion? So I'm going to do a roll call, June?
Yes.
Jason? Deb?
Hi.
David?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to go to reports, superintendent's report, or superintendent's update.
I don't really have a lot of updates for folks, I, I think resignation is probably the biggest update at this point, um, to go over, so kind of save it till then if that's possible.
Okay. Uh, finance update, Jim?
I just want to say, because I, I guess there was a flurry of Cognos reports that were sent out. And I know it has my name underneath the sending those out.
Thank you, sir.
But I just want to tell you that I, I did not send those out, and I really don't have any mechanism for adjusting or modifying or correcting. And, and I just will say that I, I did talk with Ted Gates, with the Agency of Education, to see what it would take to affect the Cognos reports, and he said, Jim, he says, you're not going to do it, he says, it's too, way too complex for you to get involved in that at this time. So, I just wanted to tell you, I, I, I'm sorry, uh, but a number of those reports were in error, and I can't fix it, I can't adjust it. So, uh, I guess in relation to tonight's, uh, report, I, I will say that in the, and I'm, I'm on the summary page, which is this page here, and the top two sections, where it's salary and benefits, those are pretty well set. Now unless, unless Andy said, geez, John, I think you ought to add another math teacher, another math pair up, these won't change very much. And again, I will say, if somebody went from a family health insurance policy to a single person policy, uh, it's, it's probably in the order of about $18,000 change, but, but we don't expect those kind of issues. So, I, I guess I'm saying you won't see a lot of difference as we go through and, on a monthly basis and continue to adjust. Down in the bottom where it, uh, where it deals with more building stuff, and I will say electrical energy. Now, if you follow over to what's in the column that's in the middle, which says 84,000, now, we're going to see some difference on the 84,000, because the high school's burn rate for electric is about 120,000. So, we know that will increase and go up. Uh, heating oil, heating oil is benched at, um, 69,500, everybody find that? Now, I don't know about your heating oil, but mine's gone up a double, so, um, and actually, it has, it's doubled from what I paid, but, uh, right now, I mean, I, I think you could expect our heating oil to be somewhere between 100 and 120,000. So those change, those two changes, I think we're going to see. Other than that, I, I don't see a lot of, of difference here.
The diesel and gas is really only 4,000?
Now, the, the diesel and gas are for, like, the lawn tractors, the snowboers, that type of stuff, so I hope it's only four.
What is the new generator going to run on?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know, I don't know how that's fuel. A new, new generator?
So if you have a, are we putting in that generator, or are you going to use it?
We'll be able to use them once we get the, uh, the work done on the circuitry. And that last conversation with, um, Green Mountain Power, it's between using the demand response of the one day or the four hour, five hour session per month.
They're diesel, aren't they?
Safe, no, no, like, they're going to run off, uh, fuel.
I believe anyone over the number last, last year.
But again, we won't, we won't see it till we get them up and running, but it should be between 2,000 and 3,000 a month, it will save by the lower rate of the rate. So, the sooner we get that done, the better, that will help us.
So anyways, I, I don't know about any fuel for the generator. I don't know how that's going to balance out of what the cost is.
Yes.
So, I was just curious about, I mean, I know that we're not that far into the FY '23 yet, but, you know, I don't see anything under substitute salaries, coaches' salaries. Have we just not had any expenditures in those realm?
Probably very, very minor, um, at this time, but I just will say, and we'll lock in, I mean, I, I think your subs, I'll say, this is not a COVID year we hold, but your subs are going to be between 40,000 and 50,000 dollars. And that's what, I mean, we will certainly encumber those kind of funds, because history, um, has, has established certainly that threshold.
Do the coaches get paid once for the season, and is it at the end? Or when do they?
Usually it's at the end of the, the, the sport.
Yep, okay.
And they, you know, they, there's a, a sheet, a check sheet that they have to go through and have everything done, and then.
So that's why it was not in there.
I, I hope that's the way it's done, I haven't been here long enough yet.
It's going to be this year, huh?
Jason?
Jim, uh, oh, you've done Jim, I'm sorry, I'll take away your hand.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm all set.
Um, so if you see any line item that is $50,000 more than what is budgeted, what actions are we taking on a different line item, so at the end of the day, we're still going to hit the budget we set to the taxpayers we're going to come in at?
And this is normally what I do is, you know, I'll monitor where we go over, you know, if we need to, to do some backfill to balance. If we're just 2,000 to 3,000, I usually don't bother, but as you say, if it's 50, if it's a capital building expense, where we've spent 50,000 because a furnace went down, we will find and, and reserve the monies within the budget. We try to balance out, because that bottom line, which is 7,310, is really where we steer towards. That holds us in line.
Can you just explain what the process, so if you see that, what do you do, do you call Andy first, then John, or how does that, I, I just don't, I don't understand the process.
I, I would certainly notify my boss, absolutely, yes, Andy Oz. And I, I would say to him, hey, listen, we, we're in trouble with this emergency purchase, this emergency item, and then I would try to make sure we could backfill it, or you may close down some of the expenditures and say, hey, listen, we'd love to get it done this year, but we can't afford it.
Anyone else have questions for Jim? Andy, is there anybody?
Oh, not that I see.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Principals report.
Before we go on?
Bradley.
I'm sorry, Margot had a comment.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Margot.
Sorry about that, I thought we were just looking at the summary sheet. I'm curious about this other packet that was handed out.
Yes.
If you could just explain this really quickly.
Sure, thank you for bringing that up. So, I've given you a line by line packet, which, I mean, this is, this is every line within the, um, de-finance that we pulled out, and it shows you, um, what the budget number was, what the encumbrances are, and then the year-to-date expenses. And it, and it has an available balance, and I will say this, this is not perfect and exact, because the budget number may be variations, because I may have called, call that something else, and so I may have shifted, you know, and I'll just give you, for instance, uh, some people call the, the phone system, you know, telephone, and, and all the telephone billing and stuff goes in there. Here, in Bellis Falls, we call it communication, where communication has a number of items, not just telephone. So, I, I tried to pull it, in this, as we go forward in next year's budget, those wrinkles will be gone. And you'll have, your, your budgeting should be exact lining, so.
And just one further question, I noticed under the encumbrance line in this bigger packet, it says CES. Is it central, or is it supposed to be, is this safe for high school? Like, is this packet the high school?
Well, I think it's encumbrances, and it's like, it's.
It's just the rest of the word.
It just got caught off.
I was looking for it.
Thank you.
What's that? Yes, sure. So, so the, what I've done here, and, and Priscilla mentioned that top line, so I, um, I normally pull all of the five elevens together, teacher salaries. So, in, in your present budgeting, you've separated every teacher line salary that you have in the, in the district. The, the, really what I've done with the encumbrance and, and year-to-date stuff is I've kind of put them together, and, and for instance, I just will say, um, you, in the past, have chosen the, for the, the nurse and the guidance counselor, an object code of 5111. Well, they're teachers, and so, uh, when I'm doing the budgeting and bringing the budget forward and showing you, hey, this is what your teacher's salary is, I put those numbers trying to collect what teacher salaries cost is. So, um, if you go on page, well, the second page, and you'll see, let's see, the line, but, but the bottom where it says 511 total, you'll see how it brings all of those together to show you, you've got $113,000 to the good, over on the far right. So, uh, that's really what I'm trying to get to, is to make it very easy to see where you're going and where you are. And, and we'll get there next year. So the only other thing that I, I wanted to say, that flip to your object sheet was a revenue sheet as well, and that shows, that middle column is where you're at, and, you know, you should be right on track for both the expenses and the revenues. And you should click in without any issues.
Anyone else? Anyone have any questions for Jim?
I don't see any, Molly.
Jim, are you good?
Good.
All right, let's move on to Mr. Bradley, thank you.
Uh, Molly, I'm, I'm sorry, is it okay if Jim, um, starts his truck home?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim, and if you ever have any questions, don't, just give me a call or email, I'll be there.
We'll talk in the morning.
Safe travel.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, pretty straightforward, uh, tonight, uh, school opening, uh, we had a fairly smooth opening. First semester class is going well, um, students getting climatized. Uh, we had seven, seven new teachers are settling in to the classes, and they're getting to know their students. Uh, co-curricular has been very popular in the fall, uh, as always, um, we've got, we have over 100 students involved in fall sports, uh, football, and those are just the records up to date, behind them, game-wise, football are 4-0, field hockey 4-0. I continue to dominate, boys soccer and girls soccer own 4-0 and 6. The competitive cost currency, we have a small but competitive team, we've, uh, I was talking to the intern today, there's seven kids out in cross-country. Um, our drama club is moving full steam ahead, and we've got a small production for the fall called Almost Main. And we're looking for, we're looking at a few choices for the spring musical. And I'll keep the board posted, and the community updated as well. Uh, HVAC update, um, Mike had said that by the end of this month, he was hoping to have, uh, pretty much a, a spec done, and an updated cost on the proposed job, ready to go out to bid, which he'll share with us. Auditorium update, uh, replacement of auditorium seating and carpeting, uh, it's moving through the bidding stage, I believe. Uh, we have a couple of bids for it, uh, and again, keep, keep you updated as, as that moves forward. The generators are fast approaching, the, the company gave us, uh, September 30th as, uh, a date when shortly after that, they'll be able to start and replace the circuitry and the software, uh, which will then get our generators, uh, up and running and have them available. Uh, the importance of this project will support emergency power when needed, and enable, uh, our school to meet Green Mountain Power's demand response, uh, which will hopefully lower our electrical rate and get our bills starting to come down again. Uh, our Haver Committee, uh, we've got our first meeting on Wednesday, uh, September 28th, uh, 3:00 PM. We sent out surveys to some, some more, some parents to join, uh, and we've got four new members that want to come and join us, which is great. Also at this meeting, I'm hopeful, I spoke to, finally spoke to the lab designer from STEM Solutions, uh, which was, um, Jim, I forget his last name, uh, but he's going to come in early in the day and have a full look at our specs, and then join the meeting, to hopefully give us a more updated version of the direction we can move in. And then I'll send out a full schedule for the year, so the rest of the meetings, as, will be alternating times as well, because I recognize that not everybody can come in at 3 o'clock, so we will alternate the, the meeting schedules and have one at 6, 6:00 PM at night, and then go back to 3:00 and 6:00, so that, that will hopefully open it up for people to attend. Uh, open house, uh, we're having our open house, uh, on October 6th, uh, beginning at 6:30, and I welcome any board members to attend, it would be awesome, uh, because this is the first one since 2019, and, uh, it would be great to see people and families and kids in the building, and it'd be nice for board members to come out and mingle and talk to families, too. That's going to help for now.
Molly has some questions.
Molly, you're muted.
I did, Andy, you, John, you had one more thing on your list on the agenda that said follow up on warrants.
Uh, correct, um, the, we're following up on the warrants, and there was a question of a $170, um, lunching, warrant for a reimbursement for Mr. Fromfelder. Uh, we had our mentors and mentees, uh, when we were doing our initial training, had lunch, and Ian went to pick it up, and he had ended up paying, having to pay. And Ian went to pick it up and he had ended up paying, having to pay for it and getting reimbursed for that. So that was for about sixteen people from Athens, the reimbursement, so.
Thank you. David Clark and then June.
I'm going to yield to June because I've got a short list of five questions. I'll bet June's list is shorter.
Mine is shorter, thank you. The warrant, there was a charge on there for a student who is already graduated. That was my question.
Yes.
I can help you out, John.
Yeah, because I answered.
They, they mislabeled the person. It wasn't that person, it was somebody current.
Oh, okay. Okay. Because that one had been long graduated.
Mr. Brody answered it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
David, it's all you.
John, who's our drama coach?
Who's our drama coach is Jennifer Garrettson slash Arrow. She's our new choral teacher.
Wonderful. Okay, my questions. I'll give them to you all here and then if you miss anything, I'm going to come back to them. I would like to know what total enrollment is at high school. Would like to know what the tech enrollment is at high school. I would like to know what our sped population is. And I'd like to know what we're offering for AP classes and what that population looks like.
Tech enrollment, what was number three there?
Well, my, my list after the drama coach was total enrollment, tech enrollment, sped population, and AP classes in that population. I will also add that because of my history at this table, I would be kind of curious to know if we do have out-of-district sped placements. Because I think that's the kind of trend that board members should be interested in.
Out-of-district sped placement.
Yeah, do we have it?
Can I piggyback on yours, David? Molly, can I do that? Because my question.
David, are you done?
Similar.
Well, I'm, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for answers, but I'm certainly willing to have Priscilla add a relevant question at this point.
Okay, go ahead, Priscilla.
My, my one was going to be to ask for a list of teachers with numbers of students scheduled in the periods like, like was done for us last year. For this semester and also as soon as you have for next semester as well. Thank you, David. That was it. It was kind of do with enrollments, that's why I was adding. Thank you.
So John, are you able to spit those numbers off or do we need to get that to the next meeting or follow up with David?
I'd rather follow up and get them all exactly right, so.
Molly, if I may comment, I feel very strongly that a principal's report should give this board some direct information about what's going on in this school in terms of populations, numbers of kids enrolled in the tech center. Obviously, I'm interested about AP because we spend an awful lot of money here on AP. And with all due respect, I greatly appreciate the fact that this school does have a commitment to co-curricular. And I agree with Jason Terry that co-curricular is a critical character builder when you're trying to turn out students who demonstrate this school's academic excellence or at least its potential for academic excellence. But bluntly, I think these are the numbers that we need to be looking at on an ongoing basis when we receive a principal's report. You know, kind of the bottom line is reading, writing, and arithmetic. So I'm, I'm hopeful, I would like to know the numbers, but I'm hopeful that we'll be seeing this information on an ongoing basis. Thank you, Molly.
Absolutely.
And John.
Does anyone else have any questions, Mr. Brody?
Molly.
Molly.
Yes, Andy.
All right, I think it was Jason and then maybe Deb had, Deb had her hand up also.
All right, Jason and then Deb.
Um, John, on the, the warrant, so here's my take on it, is that I'm entrusted to Siamese and we have had a history, not only just at this school, it seems like, but in the whole entire area of doing terrible when the audit department audits us. So I want to make sure that there's processes in place, not just vague receipts submitted. I think, I'm pretty sure that when you hand in a meal receipt, you have to include who was at lunch, you know, where was lunch, you know, those types of things. Why, I don't feel comfortable signing off on a receipt for a hundred and seventy-three dollars and all it says on the receipt is new staff luncheon. That this, when you said mentors and mentees, I don't, I don't even know what that really means. But I'm going to, as long as I'm entrusted, sign the needs to make sure that every T is crossed and every I is dotted. And I also, you know, I, I accepted your email under response with the travel peg, with, with the athletic director doing stuff in district. But if I'm a custodian or whoever and I have to run a J&amp;H hardware to get a shovel, I don't see a receipt for that for the custodian. So, you know, going to get helmets, in my view, is in district. Your response was, it was out of district. So it just seems, seems wonky to me that if somebody lives in Keene and they're dropping off trophies at Keene, then going home, why am I paying him travel to go to Keene when he lives there? It doesn't, doesn't make sense in my world. And again, it's about processes and procedures, so we all stay out of hot water. And that's really all, it's not about the money, really, it's about that.
True.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will follow up with Jim Vazina on making sure we have, employees have procedures for others supposed to do that, so.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to make one comment. I'm very pleased, I'm very pleased that Andy is, that Jason is checking those so well because, because thank you, Jason. That's a big job. Deb, you had your hand up?
Sure, um, two quick things again on John Brody's report, Principal Brody's report, three, four, and five. I just want to reiterate the things that Jigs had said, that we have the opportunity to take care of our infrastructure. That's just, which is part of the need here along with student improvement through ESAR. We should use that fund. We should not be taxing the taxpayer for those items, three, four, and five. Secondly, I agree with Jason. I did receipts for salespeople for well over five years. And in order to get it paid, it wasn't just turning in a spreadsheet or a note saying it was this much money. You actually had to prove it out with a receipt attached to that. So any receipts used had to be included. We should see that every time. It just makes sense. We don't want to be in the weeds with administrative and finances business office work, but we need to see that in order to feel comfortable with how they're accepting reimbursements. Thank you.
Thank you.
It, it is, just so the board is aware, it's my understanding, because it's the practice I've had to follow, that if we're doing a reimbursement for anyone, that you have to do a purchase rec prior to it. And that has to be signed off ahead of time for what that, those purposes are. So if I were, if I were doing a reimbursement, I don't know, I was picking something up at Home Depot. I would have to have done a purchase rec ahead of time to request a reimbursement that would have to be signed off. So when I was a director, it would be signed off by the superintendent and then that would get processed before I could go and get my, do the purchase. And then I had to bring my receipt back in, my detailed receipt, turn that in before I could get reimbursed.
So those should be attached to the bill when we're paying them.
So I would have to check with Marlene for that.
Yeah, so that we have some idea of that it's been approved.
Okay, anyone else? It looks like none. Thank you, John. Our committee is the only one we got here is building and grounds. That's all me. We have, we're going to schedule one when I get, next week, we'll schedule something. But we also have another round of going to see the rest of the schools with the WNSU building and grounds. And was kind of hoping I, we get that done before we, before we get too crazy on our building and grounds. But I do know that John has a list started. So we might do just a sit-down at a table. We're not going to do any rocks or anything, just sit down and let's see what he has in mind. I know a few of us board members have some things in mind that we would like to see and get that down on paper. So next week I'll get with Andy and we'll get something scheduled and, and we'll have a building and grounds committee meeting. But right now, nothing new. Unfinished business, the town of Westminster sent a letter out.
Molly?
Andy, do you have that? Yes.
Before you go on, can, can I update on policy? I know it's not on there.
Yeah, we have, but we have a policy to, we have approval of policy already.
But that's different from the, we met, we met on the 14th. We finished the proficiency-based graduation requirements, advancement retention policy, and animal day section policy, which were posted on September 23rd and sent out to members. That's all I needed to say. And we have a meeting this Wednesday.
They were sent out to members of the committee?
Or they were sent out to all members.
I didn't have them, Priscilla.
Get them.
Let me see where. Let me check because I know I got them.
But you're on the committee. Yeah, you're on the committee.
I'm on the, I'm on the committee too, though. All right, I think I am, I keep showing up to meetings. So, okay, Priscilla's going to work on that. Um, Andy, town of Westminster communication.
So we, Jim DeBel had come and we had spoken about the, improving the egress or the, they had to do the culvert work up at the, towards the road right across from the baseball field. And we've been asked to check with legal. I did check with our legal, who advised that really the town of Westminster should be responsible for everything and should provide us with that kind of a documentation. They provided a letter to the board. Says the town of Westminster assumes all responsibility for the creation, construction, and maintenance of the gate and entrance for the Bellas Falls Union High School onto Coolidge Street. The sole intent and purpose of this access is to only be used during an emergency situation. The gate will remain closed and locked for the rest of the time. Keys will be issued to the Bellas Falls Union High School, Westminster Fire Department, Bellas Falls Fire Department, and Westminster Highway Department. Thank you, Chuck Lawrence. And legal felt that that would absolve the high school of any responsibility. So we just wanted to update you on that.
Thank you. My understanding is no action has been taken. It's just to let everybody know that we don't have any legalities in there. The town of Westminster's taking care of it. Uh, the next thing we have on here is approval of policy D four, Title I comparability. Priscilla?
I would make a motion that we approve the policy D four Title I comparability. It was posted on eight oh eight, 2022, and we talked about it at the last meeting. It's basically just an update of our old G 13, which talks about being sure that we use Title I funds and they're used to supplement local and state funding and not to supplant them, not to replace them, so that everything, everybody is getting those funds and they're used properly.
Anyone have any questions or Priscilla, or can we have a motion?
Gave a motion.
I second.
Okay, well, little roll call. June?
Yes.
Jason? Deb?
Hi.
David?
Yes.
Margot? Priscilla?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes to approve the policy D four. Yes.
Correct what I said on the policies, that they were not sent to all members. They were posted on the website on Friday, those three that I mentioned.
Okay, can you get them sent to us, please?
I can also get them sent to you too, yes, because they were sent to me, so I'll just forward them to everybody.
Thank you. Okay, new business for discussion or action. We don't have anything on there. And we're going to have, what's that?
We have an A.
We had an A, which was the resignation, and then B, which was the admin evaluation.
Oh, we're going to, so eight A, we're going to executive or you're doing it live? You're okay with live I am?
Give the resignation and then you can make a determination after that. So let me pull that up. Sorry. So this is from Dr. Sarah McAllister. She was a new higher math teacher for this year. It's dated today, nine twenty-six, twenty-two. Dear Superintendent Haas, it is with regret that I tender my resignation from WNESU effective immediately. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve the BFUHS students for the past month, but the continued coordinated interference from the principal and the math department in my teaching practices and break time has made working conditions at BFUHS impossible for me to continue. I'll take my services elsewhere. I refuse to work in this place where my experience and expertise is discounted at every turn. I offer my best wishes for the continued success of the students, but I have my doubts because I am not leaving them in competent hands. The Chromebook that I was assigned to me is on my desk along with my badge and fob. The iPad device, devices are in the lower right desk drawer. Sincerely, Sarah McAllister. Or Dr. Sarah McAllister.
Well, I'm sorry to hear about that. Do you have any comments or Mr. Brody or?
Um, no. I had what I would term as a normal conversation around the elements that she wasn't happy with. Didn't, again, I've got to be sure that we look after everybody and most importantly, the students in the building. I felt that her possible comment or her comments could possibly have been negative in a way and spoke about that. We looked at her teaching schedule and worked with the math department to honor her requests. And I guess that still was not, was helpful. I don't know, Jenny, if you've got anything you can add. I know you spoke with the math department as well.
No, no, no problem.
Molly, I have my hand up.
Yes, David.
Okay, two comments. Number one, when we sign an employee to a contract, it's generally understood that the employee will not attempt to break the contract to seek employment elsewhere, at least in Vermont. Not much we can do out of state. It does not sound like this sort of situation, but does very much sound like the sort of situation that I think that this board needs to be briefed on by its administration in executive session because if we are not retaining teachers because of working conditions, I think that that's policy matter that the board needs to be apprised on. Thank you, Molly.
So Andy, I agree with, with David. I think this conversation needs to go in your executive session. It's to protect the administration and all parties involved.
There is a, there's a member of the public with their hand up. I don't know if you'd like to call in then, Molly, or, um, or you can, you know, we, we did have public comment earlier.
Uh, I'm, I think the public should be able to speak if they've got something. Go ahead. I'd like to have them announce who they are though first.
Yeah, sure, no problem. Uh, hi, everyone. My name is Wichi Artu, pronouncing him his. I'm a resident of Athens. Um, just, uh, being here, because I'm interested in, in, in learning more about the school boards. Um, and I guess my question, um, is, is there any formal, um, exit interview processes and some type of HR policy to discover themes and patterns, uh, among those who have resigned within a period of time to, um, understand if there are patterns happening within resignations? Um, that's just my, my curiosity. Thank you.
I, I can speak to that, Molly.
Go ahead.
We do do exit interviews with, uh, all staff that leave. Our HR department does handle that, um, and, and that information is shared with brief, um, and we do review that. Um, we, we try to do a sit down. If we can't do a sit down, we have a survey that we send out to them, uh, you know, to capture that. We'll do the survey also, but we try to do the sit down on both things. So, um, uh, and then typically follow up. Uh, the other piece, just speaking to kind of what, um, Mr. Clark had said, is we're responsible to notify the state of any employees who break a contract, so that if they try to, um, work within the state, um, that, that is flagged up there at that, that level.
Got it. Um, and I guess follow-up question to that, um, has this, uh, uh, not great working conditions, has been, has this been a thing that has arisen before in the, um, in, you know, in, in recent resignations?
I don't know if I can comment on that. Um.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to move to eight B administration review. Jason, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, yes, I would. I, we, um, I asked for an agenda item a couple months ago with, um, reviewing, uh, John's contract because he's in his last year, and I'd prefer not to have a lame duck principal, so to speak. Um, and Andy, I'm, I'm asking you, um, why haven't we seen a contract, uh, for an evaluation yet?
Um, contracts wouldn't, um, by statute, I need to notify, um, principals, um, that are continuing, if they're continuing or not by January.
What about an evaluation from Mr. Brody from last year?
To be very frank, um, with everything that was going on, it was, it was an area that I was unable to get to, to give written evaluations to any administration.
Molly, next, next month, we need to have some sort of, uh, agenda item or, I don't know the process for that or procedure. I think, I'm assuming there is one, but I think that's, I think it's very important and fair to Mr. Brody that he should know from the supervisor how he's doing, good or bad. Um, so either A, he can correct it or improve on the things that he's doing well also. That's unfair to Mr. Brody.
Okay, I'll work on that. June, do you have any hands up?
Yeah, I just have a question, I guess, for Andy. Um, since John's contract is due before January, would you have time to do?
John's contract goes through the end of this school year.
So before?
So by statute, I need to notify him by January if I, if he may or may not be recommended for a new contract.
Okay, so would you?
But it does not mean that he does, he would.
So would you have his evaluation done before January?
Yes.
Okay.
But that evaluation would not be shared with the board, because that is a personnel matter.
Right.
So, I, I mean, it's.
And I think, Andy, maybe you answered it, but that was the kind of information I was gonna look for you for, so that we could report that back. That was the kind of information that I was looking for from you when I was gonna just get it for the next meeting, but my understanding was that that is a personnel matter and we cannot talk about it at a board meeting.
That is correct.
Correct? Okay. Anything else, Jason?
Thank you.
So I think we're at director's comments, if I haven't lost track again.
That's correct.
So I'm gonna start with June.
Almost set, thank you.
Jason?
I'm good, thank you.
Deb?
I think I've had a few comments earlier in the meeting, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, David?
Well, I want to say first off that I do disagree with, uh, Andy Haas' interpretation of the, uh, board's, um, role in evaluating, uh, non, um, uh, teaching staff here. So that's a discussion we might want to come back to. But actually, I have quite a bit to say under, um, I mean, pardon me, director's comments here, but I'll try to say it briefly. I will remind this board once again that in the minutes of the April eleven meeting, Andrea Carlson, our, one of our guidance counselors, said, this is direct quote from the minutes, "I've worked here for twenty years, and during that time, it has been reported to me that racial incidents happened regularly at BFUHS." Um, I, uh, tendered an agenda request for the April twenty-fifth meeting, which was follow-up on Andrea Carlson's allegations of racial harassment at BFUHS. No action was taken on this, uh, agenda request. For the agenda of May twenty-third, I made an agenda request, steps taken to address allegations of inappropriate behavior towards minority members of the BFUHS community. No action was taken on this, uh, agenda item request. In June, we were somewhat preoccupied with the Diversity and Equity Committee, um, whose signatories, um, um, endorsed the request by a member of the student body to fly the Black Lives Matter flag here at BFUHS. That led to a policy of flags. Okay. For the meeting of July twenty-fifth, I made an agenda item request, administrative follow-up on Andrea Carlson's reporting of diversity issues. And I noted that this was the third time this has been requested. No action was taken on the agenda item request. Um, um, then, uh, for August eighteen meeting, I once again, surprise, surprise, requested a follow-up on Andrea Carlson's allegations of racial harassment at BFUHS. Now, I could question for this board, do we have a commitment beyond lip service to diversity and equity in this district? Why is this continual runaround acceptable to this school board? After six months of asking followed by six months of continual evasions, when will we get the answer to the question? Are the observations that Andrea Carlson shared with this board in April accurate? Yes or no? This is an excerpt from a statement from Mr. Brody from that meeting of the eighteenth. When asking questions of our counselors, what do we do when we hear of these reports? They state that we are governed by confidentiality and cannot report these situations for investigation. They can share the details with administration, have done so in the past, but is there is no perpetrator, and therefore there is no investigation. Well, this is not confidential student records. This is a question of how this school board is going to address this situation as a matter of policy. This is not solved by putting a confidential tip box outside the principal's office where everyone can see it. What this is, is a failure from the top down of this leadership to take responsibility for a situation which affects the rights of every student in this school to receive a free and appropriate education, and it is clear referendum on the quality of the leadership, um, that we, um, enjoy here at BFUHS and in the greater WNESU community. Thank you, Molly. I'm done.
June, Margot? Margot?
Put our pass for right now. Thanks.
Priscilla?
I guess I'm looking at.
Priscilla?
I'm looking at the August twenty-second minutes, and I guess I would like to hear maybe a little bit more at our next meeting from John on how the, um, his, how he went about educating the students on diversity at the beginning of the school year, because I know there were some programs that some of our board members were invited to attend that were, um, on those issues. And I also know there's a lot of work going on about restorative practices. So I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more about that at our, at our next meeting, um, recognizing that, um, when things are reported, um, there are so, a lot of times, students that don't want them brought out into the open. So I'm wondering how these things, if these things are helping and how, how, what work is being done in that area. I would also encourage the staff, parents, um, and anyone involved in our communities to continue to share some kindness each day, because I think that goes a long way. I think that can overcome a lot of issues if all of us treat everybody with respect and with kindness and really work hard at that. Thank you.
Okay, Tanya, you're last.
Um, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. I would like to just thank everyone for their patience on me being on Zoom tonight. And could I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss former employee?
I have a comment on that last one, if it's, if that, if it's possible.
I'm sorry, no one, we don't, we don't comment on director's comments.
Okay.
Molly, I'll re, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter and, and, um, discussion of the settlement, um, where the, uh, advanced disclosure could impact the board or the individuals involved, and invite the administration.
Thank you. Can I have a vote to go into executive session? June?
You're gonna have to do a roll call, Molly, sorry.
I'm going. You got June?
Aye, yes.
Jason? Deb? David? Margot?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
And Tanya?
Yes.
Out of executive session.
We are out of executive session. No action has been taken, and I would like to call this meeting adjourned.
You have to accept her resignation.
You do not have to.
We do not have to.
No, I don't. Nope. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.